Next, Agenda Item 2B is to hear a presentation and discuss the history of the approximately 132 acres of city-owned real estate located at the northwest corner of Recker and Thomas Roads, and to provide direction on the sale of this property for the final auction bid of $21,100,000, with some of the sale proceeds being reinvested into the development project at this location, the Red Mountain Ranch Homeowners Association Park, and city-owned recreational facilities in northeast Mesa. Angelica, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. I'll just go ahead and jump in if you're ready. So I'm here to provide a bit of the history of the property at the northwest corner of Thomas and Recker. So back in 1983, it was part of the zoning case for Red Mountain Ranch. It was part of that initial master plan for 820 acres. And as you can see in the map that's on that slide with the blue arrow, that is the property. It's 132 acres at the northwest corner. In 1985, the overall Red Mountain Ranch master plan had some modifications of 450 acres to allow a bit higher density, which brought it up to 2,570 units. And then in 1989, there was additional modifications, which actually ended up bringing the density lower. But during all of that time, that property at the northwest corner was identified for commercial, office, or industrial development. There wasn't a specific plan that was approved for it, but it was identified as part of that Red Mountain Ranch master plan. So moving forward to 1998, there was another rezoning request from a developer to change the zoning and the general plan on the area from industrial to residential. That request became controversial. It had been at several public hearings, and it got continued several times. As it was looking like that case was maybe not going to move forward, the city manager recommended that the property be purchased for the development of a future district park. There is a memo from the city manager indicating that the southern portion of the site would be developed with more active types of uses, such as baseball or soccer fields, and that the northern portion of the site would be developed with passive types of uses, such as jogging or hiking trails. What you see here is the development plan that was provided with that 1998 rezoning case. So the city went ahead and purchased the property in 1998, purchased it for $4,260,000, and used general obligation bonds to purchase the property. So after the purchase of it, in fiscal year 98-99, there was a design that the city had done for that district park. The city used about $850,000 of existing bonds for that design, and it did include lighted baseball and soccer fields, picnic areas, and so forth. And also, staff had also identified at that time that there was an additional $8.5 million that were needed in order to actually build the park. So the city went out and requested bond money in order to build the park. It went on the March 2000 ballot as question number eight. The overall bond package that was requested in March of 2000 was $62.2 million, of which 8.5 million of it was for the development of the district park. And the results of the election were not favorable. About 55.1% of the voters actually turned that bond down, so that did not move forward. And there was concerns from the city about that park development not moving forward at that time. The city went ahead and formed a citizens' bond review committee who was concerned with the lack of services that would be provided in the community in that area of town. And what they did is they went through and looked at all of the projects that had been proposed on that ballot, prioritized the projects, and tried to identify the ones that should move forward or not. What they ended up doing was recommending to council that they go back out to the voters. And they prioritized projects, and they also identified that they thought that what was needed at the time was clearer language. They thought that the voters were not sure of what exactly they were voting on in March of 2000. So the item went back to the voters in September of 2000 as question number two. This time, the bonds that were requested were about $13 million, but 9.4 million of that was for the construction of what at that time was described as a new large-city park. And same thing, it included a lot of the similar amenities that had been identified for the March 2000 bond package. The results of that bond election were also not favorable. This time, it was actually a little worse. 58.3% of the voters did not support the bonds. And so moving forward, in 2001, because the city owned the property, what was customary at that time from the planning division was to go through and take city-owned property and rezone it to a PF or a public facility category. What the public facility district allows is large-scale government, public utility, recreational, and educational facilities. And so the 132 or 33 acres were rezoned back in 2001. In addition, there was a staff report from the planning staff that indicated that there was no plans for a future park, given the defeat of the bonds. But the right-of-way existed for Star Valley, and there was a sewer lift station at the end of Star Valley. And there was also the existing Salt River Project substation at the southwest corner of the site. So all of that property excluding the Red Mountain Ranch HOA Park was rezoned to the public facility district.
Mr. Luna.
Angelica, I think part of the issue that happened with this area is there was some signage there that says "future park." And so that caused a lot of confusion among the residents in and around that area. Is there a reason why we put a sign up? What was the motivation behind that?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, when the city goes out and does bond elections, it is typical that staff will put up signs identifying what the future projects are in that area, similar as was done with our last bond election. This was also done back in 2000, and those signs, staff neglected, and it was oversight from staff, and the signs were actually never removed. So you are correct. There was a sign that was placed on the property, and it was just never removed up until last So moving on, so I basically have given you the history of the property. Now I'm going to jump to the more current activities that have been taking place. So in 2017, the planning division received a request for rezoning of the southwest corner of Thomas and Recker. Now, this is not city-owned land. This is private land ownership here. That parcel was about 27 acres, and the request was for a minor general plan amendment and rezoning, which would have allowed residential development. So that's what the proposal was for. It was for medium density. And there was a concern with the elimination of commercial uses to support the area, because that area is identified as a mixed-use activity district, which would allow mix of commercial uses to support the area. So there was concerns that were raised by Falcon Field Airport. You can see the property identified with the red arrow there at the southwest corner of Thomas and Recker, and that property is within the 55 DNL area, which is... DNL is the day-night average sound level, which is a metric identified by the Federal Aviation Administration. When you look at this map, since we were talking with the earlier presentation about the airport overflight area, the AOA zones, they're not identified on this map, other than it has to do with the day-night level categories. And so the 60 DNL, which is identified in yellow on this map, that equates to the AOA3 area. And so you can see that the property at the southwest corner is not within the AOA3 area, but it is within what's identified by Falcon Field Airport as the 55 day-night level area. And so there was concerns... Yes?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you compared it to our previous conversation when you said that the yellow zone was the... I don't know these terms.
AOA3.
AOA3. Would that second dotted line be considered the equivalent of an AOA?
It wouldn't have been on the map. It would have been AOA3.
Correct. There are no use restrictions after the AOA3. In fact, there are no use restrictions within the AOA3 area. It's in the AOA1 and AOA2 where we have use restrictions. So basically, within the yellow area and the red area are the AOA1 and 2, and 3.
So this is just a more restrictive noise identifier than what we actually have at Gateway?
Right.
And I think a lot of that has to do is... One of the differences between the two airports is while Gateway has big jets that come in that are very loud, there's a much different frequency out at Falcon Field, where you have smaller planes, but they're much more frequent. And so I think there's some sensitivity of why they kind of consider the 55 DNL. Now, you just heard Nana say that the buildings that were being proposed are being constrained to 45.
45, yes.
So the 55 is on the edge of... I mean, this is Falcon Field, and they do it by... A lot of it is driven by kind of where the complaints come from. But as far as restriction of homes, if we were at Gateway, this wouldn't be a discussion. But it does come to the council, and Falcon Field gets greatly concerned, especially you see this property is it's directly in line with the runways. And so that's just Falcon Field weighed in because they saw that it fell right at the tip of this area.
Are those the inbound... Is that the inbound flight path, or is that the...
You know, I think it...
Depends on the direction of the wind.
Yeah, it could be either way. It could be either way.
Yeah, redirect you to come in either one direction or the other, depending on...
And so just to summarize my last question, the AOA2, or whatever the last project was that we discussed, that would then fall into that yellow zone, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna.
And that... So here, we're talking about the properties south of Thomas.
Correct.
Not the city-owned property.
Correct.
But it's... I think what Angelica's pointing out is when this application came forward, Falcon Field weighed in and expressed concerns about changing the use from mixed-use?
From the mixed-use activity district.
Mixed-use activity, which is what we just saw, right? Moving it from something like what we just were presented to residential, more like the mayor was talking about, more of the single-family residential. That's where they started weighing in. And there really is this idea of more outdoor activity in a residential creates, obviously, more exposure to the noise and the impact. And so this is right on that tip of that area. And so there was, you know, Falcon Field weighed in and said they were just... They didn't like the idea of changing this area from the mixed-use to more of a single-family residential.
Correct. So yeah, Falcons' concerns were due to airplanes... To runways lining up with that property, and then also, when airplanes are landing, they are flying at a lower level over the property. And so we also received concerns from the Economic Development Advisory Board and our Economic Development Office regarding this parcel going to residential because of the loss of the commercial uses in the area.
I'm sorry, maybe before we leave that point, when this project has been discussed... Or well, it hasn't been discussed in council meetings yet, but we've had members of the public come and say, "You should not proceed with the sale of this property because it violates a long, a decades-old agreement between Falcon Field and the city to not allow development in this area." Do you have any idea what... Does that agreement exist, and what do you know about it?
Mayor, council members, I'm not aware of a very specific agreement about that. There are documents that we found and that were provided to us about specific agreements between pilots and the FAA regarding takeoff and departure routes for pilots. But like I said, with this southern piece, there was concerns from Falcon Field about residential, because it was within that 55 DNL area.
But to your point, Mayor, there has been comments made that there's some agreement out there. The only thing we can find, even from Falcon Field, right, is that the tower has some guidelines that speak directly to different patterns in which they can fly around the airport. And that speaks... But it's not... We're not a party to that agreement. It's between... It's a guideline, or I'm not sure how it's enforced, but it's an understanding so that the pilots and the tower understand a pattern in which they fly around the airport. But it's not... The city's not a party to it. But I think later you'll see... Again, this corner became sensitive to Falcon Field, specifically the alignment of the runways going directly over the top of this corner. That just drew their attention to that issue, so...
Thank you.
Jeremy? Just to have... Sorry, I'm easily to confuse. I have one last question. So this is specific to a residential property that you're using to compare to the other property that we're getting ready to sell. So where... Okay, it's... Okay, perfect. Got it.
So Mayor, council members, yeah, there's a reason why I was talking about that property, because when that zoning case came through, it was determined to be not appropriate to have residential in that at that location. And that's where the discussion started between the city and that developer, that it wasn't appropriate there, but north of there, the city did own property, and that if there was going to be residential in the area, it was more appropriate to be located north of Thomas. So you see the city's parcel identified on this map in blue, and you can see, again, it's located out of that 55 DNL area. And so in August of 2018, when the city was in discussions and negotiations with that developer in order to trade the land, we went out and had our property appraised. That developer went out and had our property appraised as well. So they provided... Well, we ended up getting an appraisal in August of 2018 from that developer for eight and a half million, a little over eight and a half million dollars. But that developer's appraisal was only for 69 acres of our 132. And so the city's appraisal that came in on May 3 of 2018 came in for $25.5 million. But what was interesting about that appraisal was that it did not deduct any acreage for the city-owned sewer lift station. It did not deduct a buffer for NAMMO along that north property line. It did not deduct any undevelopable acreage due to topography. In addition to that, it was for the entire 132 acres, and it was appraised with a proposed residential density of 3 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. So when that appraisal came to the city, to the staff, we looked at it, and we were excited about the $25.5, but we didn't agree that that was the right appraisal for the property. In addition to that, when that developer to the south looked at our appraisal, he was very concerned because those were not the same assumptions that he had given his appraisal to assess the value of the property. And so we ended up having that developer's appraiser, as well as our appraiser, talk to each other to ensure that they were both using similar assumptions. This is where we received a second appraisal in August of 2018, and the restrictions that were provided to the appraiser included that buffer along the north property line of 588 feet. It also retained 2.7 acres for that sewer lift station, and it reduced the developable acreage down to 94.5 acres due to the topography. In addition to that, there was a restriction, or the density for residential development was reduced down to 2 dwelling units per acre. So then that's the appraisal that we have for the property for $15.6 million. So as we were getting these appraisals, and we were working with that developer to the south, the city started to get contacted from brokers and developers that were hearing out in the community that the city was considering parting with this land, and they were very interested in having an opportunity to purchase the property. And so as the negotiations were going forward, we concluded that we were not going to come into an agreement. That, like I said, that developer's appraisal of our property was much lower than our appraisal, and we just weren't able to come to an agreement. And so that land trade never went forward. But based on the discussions with that land trade, like I said, we started to get inquiries. And so that's when the city started considering the idea of holding a land auction, and so...
Just quickly, just the point here is we were trying to find a way... The developer was anxious to do a high-quality development in the area, but the compatibility, plus the loss of the mixed-use space, that corner was a great concern to the city. So we said, "Well, let's look and see. Maybe we can come up with an opportunity to do a land swap so that you could still do a quality development, but do it on the other side of Thomas, and then the city would do a land swap." But we weren't sure where the values were going to fall out. Once you become familiar with the city's own property, it has a tremendous amount of topography change on it. And that's really became kind of the challenge in the discussions from the appraisers and the developers, is really how much of that property is developable? And when you do the appraisal, so how much of that acreage do you really count in the acreage that can be developed that you could build a home on? Because there's a lot of it. There's a major wash going through, and on one end, there's quite a steep slope going up to NAMMO tally. So there's a tremendous amount of area. And that was the challenge we were having, is trying to come up with something that we could both agree to, as far as even just what land was available to be developed. You know, the developer was saying the land was too hard and rocky, and so... But the closest we could get was this $15.6 million and his $8.6. And so quickly, we realized we were just so far apart that we probably weren't going to be able to strike a deal with this developer. So that's kind of took a lot of time to get there, but that's where the eventuality came out to.
At some point, a developer had the opportunity to just simply purchase this land from the city for $15.6 million.
Sure, sure.
But then it went to an auction and actually sold for $25 million more than what they...
Right. And we... And Councilmember, to your point, we informed that developer that that's what we were going to do, and said, "Listen, even if we can't work out this trade, you're certainly welcome to come and participate in the auction." So we didn't exclude him, and we were very open about the process. It was, you know, I think he was disappointed we couldn't come to a conclusion, but I think we both walked away from the table, understanding our numbers were just so far apart. But we did offer to him the opportunity, I mean, everybody, to come and participate in the auction.
How many bidders did we have show up to the auction?
So Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I'll actually get to that in just a second.
Okay, fair enough. Sorry.
Maybe before we proceed, I think, Frankie, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a curious question on the first appraisal. Was it just an oversight that we didn't restrict the pieces as far as deduct acreage for this lift station, the buffers? And so what was the reason?
Yeah, the appraiser probably didn't... We probably didn't ask enough questions. They didn't ask enough questions of us, and we probably didn't. We thought some of that would be obvious, there's a lift station there. And so, yeah, we probably didn't provide enough instruction. We tried to be careful, right? We don't want to over-instruct the appraiser. But after it came back, it became very... And it almost became this was almost a throwaway appraisal, because it became... Even we agreed with the developer that this wasn't realistic, because we were including the buffer. We were... It had all the land for the... It assumed all the land would be developable. We knew that wasn't accurate because of the wash. So we kind of realized... And I think that's where the controversy in staff's mind, that this was... It was an appraisal, but it just really wasn't reflective of really the development opportunity. And that's why we turned around and said, "Wait a minute. Let's go do a second appraisal. We need to put all these conditions in." And we got a lot more thoughtful about the buffer, about really how many acres are developable based on slope and based on where they are. So we... You can see, we reduced even the developable acres significantly to try to get closer to something that, if we put on the market, someone could actually develop. So...
Thank you. I do have a question on that, because if I recall, last year, on that appraisal, we had specifically asked staff if there was... If there was an appraisal for $25 million, and staff has said, "No appraisal exists for $25 million."
That's correct, Councilmember. And we made a mistake. Unfortunately, the individuals that were making that presentation, the question was asked of them, were not aware of the first appraisal. The staff member who was responsible for that had just come back, had been on leave from the city for quite a while, had come back. And that $25 million was really not even part of the negotiations or any discussion ongoing. But yes, it was there, and I think we informed the council right after that, the next day, that we had made a mistake in that comment. And since then, we have apologized profusely. We have posted it online. We've done everything we can to indicate that, yep, we made a mistake. But we don't... It's not material. It was not part of some... Something that led to something inappropriate. It was just a... The question was asked of a staff member who was not involved at the beginning, a staff member who was responsible. It was just an honest mistake. They had just come back to work from being on Family Matter, and so we made a mistake. But we quickly, as soon as we realized that, we said, "Oops." Next day, we shared it with everybody. We sent it to everybody. It's been online. We've shared it publicly for anybody to look at also.
If I may, one last question. The limitations that we put on the second appraisal, you know, the amount of developable land, the number of houses per acre, however you define that, from a legal perspective, then whoever we... Or if we sell this property, the purchasers would be, in fact, limited to those...
So, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think Angelica will explain that, that even when we went out for the auction, we brought a lot of that forward and got more... And so that when they were bidding on it, we made... With great intent, we have tried to suggest that the density would be somewhat compatible to what we see across that Red Mountain. We went and talked... Well, I don't... Let her go through the presentation. You're going to see all those elements that she's... We've tried to put into this that were known as before the auction took place.
Sorry, Angelica, I keep interrupting you.
That's okay. So I'll just go back to the land auction and just give you a little bit of information about that. So staff had not done a land auction previously, and so we went out and researched what it would take to hold a land auction. Once we had all of that information, we had that presentation to you at a study session back in January, and then we received the direction to proceed. So once we received the direction to proceed, we went ahead and did all of the legal requirements that we needed to, based on the city's management policy on holding land auctions. And so we went ahead and noticed the auction in the newspaper. We posted the property, and we mailed out notices. And so as we were moving forward with that, we also reached out to some of our stakeholders, to NAMMO tally and Boeing, and staff met with their representatives in order to explain the land auction and the development process that would be required if we ended up with a successful bidder that would end up developing the property. And the comments that we received from NAMMO was that they wanted to ensure that there was a 600-foot buffer along the north property line. And the comments that we received from Boeing was that, yes, they did have a concern with any future noise complaints that could be generated from any additional residential in the area. And so they just specified that they wanted to ensure that we would receive a navigation easement, which that is something that we typically do of residential development that is within proximity of an airport, of either of our airports. So we informed them of that. And then in our discussions with them, they also clarified that helicopters do... Their helicopters do not fly directly over our property. They fly north. They do eventually head east, but it's not directly over our property. So going forward to the land auction, we did hold it back on March 21st. We did have two bidders that showed up and registered. It was Toll Brothers and Blanford Homes. They each were required to provide a $250,000 cashier's check to register for the auction. They did start bids at $15 million, and the bids increased in $50,000 increments. And Blanford was the successful bidder about an hour or so later at $21.1 million. They did provide 5% of the bid amount in escrow, and so we have $1,055 in escrow from them. And they also executed the purchase and sale agreement, which since March 21st, they've been waiting for us to come forward so that the city can authorize the execution of the purchase and sale agreement. And so we do have Blanford Homes that is a successful bidder. You'll see in the purchase and sale agreement that they are... Their LLC that they'll be using for this development is Desert Vista 101. They are a home builder that has built in Arizona for over 40 years, and they build resort-style master planned communities for families, active adults. You can see some of the pictures of some of their more recent developments in Mesa, Los Indias, Mulberry, and Mountain Bridge. And so once on Monday, you know, your action on Monday would allow the execution of the purchase and sale agreement from the city. What that would do is start the 12-month feasibility period. So when we sign it, that's when that starts. And after that feasibility period, their money that is in escrow will be non-refundable when that expires. In addition to that, as part of the requirements that we've put in in the purchase and sale agreement, they would have an additional three months to close on the sale of the property. And the city manager, with the way that the information is provided within the purchase and sale agreement, would be allowed to authorize up to three one-month extensions. So at the most, from when the city executes the purchase and sale agreement, Blanford will have up to 18 months to close on the property. Now, there are a lot of requirements that they need to be able to meet before the city will agree to close on the property. They need to provide an acceptable development plan in order to close on the property. And so I'll also get into additional requirements and discussions that... And so, I'll also get into additional requirements and discussions that we've had regarding a distributed district park. And so, we understand from the residents that they do want their district park. And... But based on the outcome of the bond elections, we understand that they didn't want it maybe as it was proposed back in 2000. And so, part of what staff is working on and looking to ensure that gets provided is that there are park amenities provided in northeast Mesa similar to those that were identified in the district park back in the 2000s. In addition to that, we do want Blanford Homes to deliver public amenities within the project as well. And we also want Blanford to work with the Red Mountain Ranch residents in order to find out from them what the desired amenities are that they could then provide within the existing Red Mountain Ranch HOA Park that exists on the west side of Recker that our property surrounds. In addition to that, we want them to work with the residents to identify what other improvements they want. You know, we've heard the passive trails and mention about other amenities and so we want them to find out exactly what it is that the residents want so that it can be incorporated into the project and into the improvements at that Red Mountain HOA Park.
Mr. Luna?
So, some of the earnings that we're going to use for the... With the land sale, we're going to distribute it into several areas within District Park, District Five, into some of our parks. So, you mentioned possibly pickleball courts. I know we still have to work, Mr. Herschberg, on that. I've been asking for pickleball courts from my... Because that's what I hear from my residents. And working with the Red Mountain Ranch community to possibly do additional development around their park area, give them some additional amenities, some passive trails in and around that area, perhaps maybe an overlook, but those are the kind of things that we're looking in terms of distributing those funds throughout District Five, but we're going to work specifically there as well as some of our parks in District Five. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, that is correct.
So, Mayor and Councilmember Luna, as you know, I think the concern... And this is different, you know, because the city staff back at some point told, in a memo, said, "We're not going to do a park here. We're not going to do a park here." And I think they did that just to calm everybody down because it'd been defeated twice. But I think what we've heard is that the residents do enjoy the opportunity to have passive uses of the property. And there's some washes and obviously the area, the buffer between NAMO Tally and the development. As we've talked with the proposed developer, he's indicated he's willing to work to keep those open to the public. So, what we've identified is the opportunity to use proceeds to help make those permanent, to have those developed out with signage so they'd be open to the public. But in being, I guess, in being fair to the fact that the dollars that were used were city dollars and trying to come closer to this district park concept, they're recognizing maybe putting a lighted ball field across the street from Red Mountain may not be what they want. At least, it appears to us, that's one of the reasons... At least, that's what's been told to us, is one of the reasons it was defeated. But nearby, in this area, and obviously in District Five, there are ongoing program or projects right now for soccer fields and we have opportunities where we can put in pickleball. So, the idea is maybe we would take the proceeds and take parts of the district park and maybe not put it right here on the site, but go put it in other areas within District Five so that the residents, the intended beneficiaries of these park funds could still receive those benefits, maybe not right on the site, but certainly in the areas nearby.
Jeremy?
Question on that. So, we have... I believe in the past, I've heard that when we have our park bonds that... And correct me if I'm wrong, but they're allocated on an annual basis up to the discretion of council, right? Like, it's not... Even though you may come out and say, "Well, we want to build these 15 parks and the park bond passes," are the funds limited to those 15 parks or is it at the future discretion of councils to determine how those funds are...
I'm going to let the city turn because I think once we put out in the pamphlet, I think there's... You show intention. I don't know... I don't know what the legal obligation is on that, so...
So, Mayor and Council, it depends on each of the bond packages, but usually there's a catch-all within the bond package at the end of it that gives flexibility for changes. I'll give you an example. There was one identified for a purchase of Buckhorn Bass. And so, the city ultimately did not purchase Buckhorn Bass because we couldn't come to an agreement on the purchase price. So, we weren't obligated, and you can imagine if we were obligated, how that would affect the purchase price.
Sure.
We weren't obligated to go purchase Buckhorn Bass. And so, there is some flexibility.
And specific to these last two, the auctions related to... Sorry, not the auctions, the bond initiatives related to this specific park that failed twice was... Were those bond elections specific to this park or...
Yes.
They were?
There were. Within the question, this park or this location was identified. Does that make sense? Because it was like a... It was a question with a larger amount. It wasn't just this park by itself. It was included with, as I think, as you go back to the beginning where Angelica said, when they put out their publicity pamphlet, this park was identified and to be included in the question that was defeated.
If you look at Slide 7, yeah, it said 13... It was a $13 million bond and it was designated. 9.4 of the 13 was earmarked for this location, for this park.
That is correct, Mayor.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Mayor and Council, you know, it's been a while since I looked at those publicity pamphlets, but I did look at them as I remember it. I believe it was in the second publicity pamphlet. It was specifically identified, just off the top of my head. I don't remember if it was in the first one, just so that, you know, so we're clarified. There's obviously more information than what's just in the publicity pamphlet, so I don't know if it had been identified otherwise. But as I remember looking at those publicity pamphlets, I do remember it in the second but not the first.
Yeah, we have documents that were shared by council to the community. Whether they are publicity pamphlet or not, we know that eight and a half... There was a spreadsheet that identified how they got up to 16.5 and there was eight and a half million in there.
So, the... When we purchased the land, it was general obligation bonds?
Correct.
Which is different from a park bond.
Totally different.
It is.
As a list of...
It is. I think... But the questions come up, right? So, we spent $4 million on this property. It came out of bonds that were... And the city manager at the time said, well, they're geo-bonds. He said, "But we need more parks, right? We need a park in this growing part of the city." So, he called... I don't... You know, we'll have to go back and remember how he called it, but he specifically said, "Let's you... We have some funds available for purchasing parkland," whether they were generically geo-bonds or whether they were park bonds. In his mind, those dollars were available for purchasing parks' land, which they did, right? They went out and purchased the land for a little over $4 million.
$4,026,000.
$2,000. So, you know, I think from staff's perspective that kind of, you know, Mr. Luster still, you know, I can still hear his voice in my head. And so, he's still... So, the idea that thinking, our proposal to council is at a minimum that we, if we sell, if we're to sell this property, this will all work out, then at least we would say, you know, "We have $4 million in this deal. We can certainly go look and how do we reinvest that now into, again, this distributed park concept is what we're proposing."
Well, so I think we could ask the question, you know, is there... The $4 million that was used back in 1998 to buy this property, was that park bond that creates some sort of legal requirement that thou shalt not use, you know, this property for something unintended?
Right.
And that's not the case. It was a general obligation bond, so there's no legal requirement that this property be developed as a park. We could suggest that there might be some sort of moral, you know, that there were... That's what was our stated reason at the time. And so, maybe just to remain consistent with the policy that was announced when this property was purchased, there should be some effort made to accomplish that goal. And so, that when I first saw this phrase, "Distributed district park," I had to really think about it. But the more I hear it, the more I think about it, I think this is a great use of words to describe what we're trying to do. I think part of the reason this property has been problematic for the last several decades is because there's been mixed feelings on the part of the Red Mountain Ranch community. We want amenities, we want park amenities, but we don't necessarily want to have lots of lights, lots of parking lots, lots of people from outside of our community coming to this area. So, that's the push and the tug and the push on this. So, I see this as an opportunity to get to a yes, yes, a win-win situation where in working with the developer, we can say, "Hey, we want to preserve the open space. We want people to continue to have the opportunity to take their dog for a walk in the desert. We want to provide some additional amenities, some recreational opportunities, and we can work that in to this high-end residential development in a way that's not going to be offensive to the Red Mountain community with all of the maybe slightly more obnoxious activity that comes with having a district community park across the street from your home." But I'm sorry, I'll get off my soapbox and...
Can we finish?
Yes. Angelica, please, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, next step, so Blanford does need to come back and provide a development plan. In addition to that, they need to file an application that will be heard by the Planning and Zoning Board and by council for a couple of things. First, the minor general plan amendment to change the general plan land use designation over the property. Also, a rezoning to allow the residential development and then the subdivision planning. In addition to that, they are going to work with the property owners and the residents during the citizen participation process to ensure that their desires are incorporated into the project. And lastly, they will have up to 18 months to meet the conditions in the agreement, which is filing those applications, going through the hearing processes in order for the city to agree to close on the property. And so, staff's recommendation for Monday is that council approve the $21.1 million bid and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement, which will start the clock ticking for that feasibility period, which is 12 months. In addition to that, staff is recommending that we begin discussions to allow staff to come back with a proposal for the distributed district park. With that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Thank you, Angelica. Council, additional questions?
I have a comment.
Okay, let's go with Mr. Luna and then Mr. Freeman.
There's going to be a number of opportunities for the public to weigh in in terms of what they would like in that area. So, I just want to make sure that that's out there because I'm hearing that there hasn't been a public process. Everything that we do is public process. We want to be transparent. We have a meeting on Monday. The public's invited to attend and weigh in. And then, they'd have to go to planning and zoning and all those steps. This is going to take a year and a year and a half, maybe. So, I'm hoping that Mr. Blanford, I've spoken to him, he's going to work closely with the Red Mountain Ranch people to get their input and to get their ideas in terms of what they would want in that area. Mr. Blanford has an outstanding reputation in District Five and so I know he's done great projects, so... And maybe Mr. Blanford will be willing to come up and speak a little bit about that if he's... If that's okay, Mr.?
Mr. Blanford, I'd like to give you the opportunity, if you'd like to say something. Feel free to decline if you'd like to. Go ahead and come up. Welcome.
Mayor, Council. Obviously, I'm thrilled to be the winning bidder. I'm not sure. No, we know this is a challenging site, has a lot of history. Obviously, we've been building that area for a long time and kind of a fixture in the area. I just want to assure that the council and the mayor that, and the homeowners adjacent to the property, that we'll do the best we can to work with everybody and try to come up with a plan that works for them, works for the city, and works for us. I mean, it's got to work for all three, right? We're committed to, you know, to high-quality development. I think that Mr. Whitaker asked about the density. I don't think it ever got really explained. I think within the purchase and sale agreement, it states the density would be similar to Red Mountain Ranch. So, that's our intent. We have a lot of work to do to understand what we can achieve on that site. It's about plus or minus 95 acres of usable land. That could be, you could have 10 engineers and they could all come up with a slightly different number, but somewhere in that range. So, we intend on doing a high-quality, high-level community. I mean, everything we're doing at this point in our, in my career and with our company is to create nice communities that withstand the test of time and, you know, no one community is similar to another one. They're all unique to each other, so that's really our intent. We know it won't be easy and can answer any questions you may have. And our team and Tom Lemon is a very well-known in the building development community and he'll be the one that would be running this thing throughout, as well as our engineer and land development team that will work hard with the neighbors and have a lot of experience with this type of development. Of course, working in the desert and the hillside development is not new to us. I would think that for homeowners that are curious, that's what we're going to do. You might look at Los Indias Mountain, particularly Los Indias Mountain, not so much Los Indias because there is a difference between the two. Go further up on the hillside and look at it. And then, Mountain Bridge, of course, is a much more current example. Look at other communities that we're doing in the area. You don't have to go far. Brown and Greenfield gives you what, gives you a feel what three homes an acre looks like at Brown and Greenfield. It's called the Grove of Valencia. Those are good examples of that kind of density. So, any questions you may have, I'm here to answer them and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Blanford. I just want to comment, I've seen the quality houses that you guys build and I look forward to seeing what you guys bring to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen?
I know that you haven't done the design yet on the, for the property, but is the intent to allow access to the trails and I guess the washers and the areas that are utilized now being to continue to be accessible to the public or is it going to be gated or is there any buffer along Recker that you're planning? Is there any general guidelines that you have for the development?
Right, well, that's a good question. It's a moving target. One, we definitely know we've got to provide the buffer on the north property and, you know, our thought process on that is the city retains the ownership of that northern part of the property, you know, plus or minus 30 acres. And passive parks are built up there, maybe, you know, trail system that is a public trail. I suggested that there's a trailhead there. It might want to be understated a little bit because I know the Red Mountain Ranch folks kind of have their idea of not... They want to see some amenities, but they don't want it to be too overstated per se. And that's the way, what we're hearing and we're looking forward to working with the Red Mountain Ranch folks to learn more about that. We do intend on doing a gated community, that's our intent. That's one of the things that excites us about it. As far as trails that go through the property, I mean, I think it would be more like maybe on the perimeter of the property or the perimeter or part of the property. But the biggest thing is we see the use of that northern property where the views are great and where it's, you know, where you've got the protective buffer for NAMO. I mean, I think that makes the most sense to focus on that area.
And will it be integrated into the Red Mountain Park or whatever that park area is, is existing next to it?
That's a possibility. We've met with one representative of the Red Mountain Ranch community yesterday, actually, and we have a meeting with the board next week. That the actual time has not been identified. We're waiting to hear from them on this, but we believe it's going to be on the 23rd next of May. We've talked about some different ideas, what to do with that park and even, you know, does the property want to be, the whole property want to be annexed into the Red Mountain Ranch Community Association or not? You know, we think that it does not want to be annexed into the community association, but we feel like there may be an opportunity to do a joint-use park. They want to see more amenities added to that, to their private park. They also, the fact that it's across the street on Recker, it's kind of unique. It's not in the middle of their community, it's more on the outside. And if we build around that park, then that park kind of almost feels like it's more part of the new community and not part of the old. So, I had suggested that maybe a joint-use might be the way to go is we make improvements to the park and then a prorated share of annual, you know, cost for maintenance is contributed by the new homeowners association for our community and they continue to pay their share that they're already paying as well. So, that, those are kind of the conversations that are taking place in regards to that park.
The existing park is part of the Red Mountain homeowners community?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Blanford? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your willingness to come and speak with us.
Thank you.
Okay, so this was just for information, but this is on our agenda for Monday.
That is correct.
And again, when we approve this sale, what we're saying is we begin the 12-month period to get the entitlements down and to have all the public meetings.
Leads Mr. Blanford to be, go forward and pursue the entitlements, so, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to thank Mr. Lester for the foresight. I'm sure spending $4 million back in the day was a pretty big deal. And then, now we have the opportunity to leverage that land into Mr. Blanford buying it, so thank you very much. I know it'll be a beautiful project. With that, you know, theoretically, the bonds for that have been paid off a number of years ago and I had that discussion with staff. And so, the bonds, you know, have been paid, satisfied. The other thing that's important is there have been two elections to build out the park, which we've... which we've discussed, and they failed each time. I appreciate rezoning it to the public facility that they staffed back at the time. And again, anytime that we can divest ourselves of some land and get it back out into the community and build neighborhoods, we build just a stronger Mesa, and that's what I'm interested in. And then we do have a windfall of some money from the sale of the land, so I appreciate being able to send that back out in the community. Maybe not all in District Five, but, you know, maybe sure in some other districts, but... But I was surprised that the auctioneer's price for his sale was very low, really low, to me. But then again, the aircraft path, as it goes over, you know, the aircraft path passes over Red Mountain Ranch already, and this will kind of skirt it a little bit to the northwest. So regardless, I'm in support of this moving forward. Let Mr. Blanford build Desert View or Desert Vista?
Desert Vista.
Desert Vista, one oh one. So thank you very much.
I have one more question also. Is it, it's my understanding, please clarify me if I'm wrong, that we're going to take approximately four million dollars from the sale of this? And/or not necessarily?
Well, I think that's what we've recommended. I've recommended, Mr. Freeman probably has some other ideas, and so I think what we do is, can we wait until we get closer to the entitlements? But to that point, I think it's important, if council would agree with this, I mean, you're giving specific action related to Mr. Blanford. What we would like to do, though, because we think it's important for the community to hear this upfront, we would like to begin having those dialogues with Mr. Blanford, with Red Mountain, and figure out what part of this could the city participate in, right? In contributing towards the amenities, the park amenities. That would be public park amenities, as well as looking at the opportunities, whether it's the more active part of the parks, whether it's the soccer fields or the pickleball, and put together a package and bring that to council and have that discussion, and establishing a dollar amount. That, again, will only happens if we conclude the closing of the property. It doesn't happen if we're not able to do this. So that's what we'd like to do, if that's, if that council's comfortable allowing us to at least move forward in that direction.
I would just like to see the proceeds, you know, to make those improvements for the courts that this area needs and for parks, come from this proceeds of this sale?
Oh, great, great, yes.
And not be yet a bond item or another revenue source?
No, it's fully intended that it would come from the cash proceeds of the sale. That's how, yes, thank you, sorry for that.
No, I just want to clarify.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
My understanding, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I think this will, this issue will be debated a lot over the next year and a half. This is the beginning of a process, so I'll save my pontificating for one or many of those future meetings, but I think this is a very exciting opportunity for us to have a win-win-win-win-win situation, where all of the people who have an opinion on this come to the table, and we'll try to do everything we can to incorporate everyone's concerns into how we move forward.
Mayor, Mike?
Yes.
Mayor, Council, just want to follow up on something that Councilmember Luna said, and I think a question that Councilmember Whitaker started to say, but I think we got tangent it off, and that is, council has multiple hats on this, and I just wanted to make clear, as it goes through this process, this agreement does not limit council's authority. And in fact, we went to great detail throughout the document. And it's worth actually reading one paragraph. So if people feel that this somehow limits what's going to end up at the very end, it doesn't. It's going through the standard process. In fact, we say in the agreement, buyer acknowledges that the seller, City Mesa, is a municipal entity, and it, and its agreement to sell the property and this transaction is separate from and does not affect the city's separate powers and authorities, a governmental entity, including but limited to the authority to review applications, and it goes for the general plan and the zoning, and it goes on, and it's actually an entire paragraph and then another sub-paragraph. So this agreement doesn't, and somehow, there's no sort of predestined way in which this is coming out. It is going to go through the standard process. You sign the contract to sell the property, it goes into the feasibility period for twelve months, but then it's going to go through the process.
I do have...
Sure.
Questions is, I think when we did the appraisal and we tried to determine the value of the property prior to selling it, we put, or I guess we suggested limitations on the use of the property that affected the appraisal price, which you could argue would affect the bidder price. So I am curious, like, are there covenants that we plan on putting in the sale agreement that would restrict the buyer from doing any of the things that we requested to affect the appraisal price of the property?
Well, yeah, the ones I think of most specifically are the six-hundred-foot buffer. So that's, that will be, obviously, have to be included. Retaining access to and maintaining our lift station is very important to us, obviously, and how that, and making sure we have, we can get to that, because it's kind of down in the middle of the property. What other, I can't remember what specific...
The density?
Oh, the, well, the density, again, I think that's what Jim was suggesting. Those are conversations we've asked that, we put in there, I think we indicated that we're, what we're supportive of and looking forward to is something similar to what Red Mountain is across the street. And I think you just heard from Mr. Blanford indicating that was his intentions also.
Yeah, again, I mean, just backing out of the process, my concern would be that if you go and get an appraisal on a property and you say, well, the density of this property has to be as such of, I think it was two point five houses per acre. I don't recall from, to, I mean, that's going to, that's going to affect the appraisal price, right? Like, if you said that the density could be fifty houses per acre, obviously, that, I mean, we've seen the drastic appraisal prices, one for eight million, one for twenty-five million, one for fifteen million, and then the final sale price of twenty-one million dollars. So obviously, there's a lot of variables being thrown around here. So I assume, based on Blanford's past, the other products that I've seen them build, it's going to be a high-quality development, but I think it's only fair that if we created an appraisal that valued the property at a certain price, that those should be added to covenants of the sale of this property to some extent, right?
The density will be up to us. This will be, the Mesa City Council will say, Mr. Blanford, here's how many homes per acre you can build, because we're the ones that are going to approve the zoning case. So, and I'm sure the Red Mountain Ranch folks will be lining up to speak at that zoning hearing and at the city council meeting, so.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, if you go back, again, going back to the appraisal, then why, why would we specify in the appraisal that the density had to be two houses per acre if we were going to come back and say, oh, we changed our mind, you know, you can put ten houses per acre? I mean, that affects the appraisal price, that affects the auction price. And so if we weren't going to put those stipulations in place in the beginning, why would we ask the appraisal to use those guidelines to appraise the property?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we do have very specific requirements within the purchase and sale agreement that indicate that the density for Red Mountain Ranch, for Red Mountain Ranch should be similar to what's proposed for this site development. And so we do need Blanford to produce a site plan that they can bring forward that shows what the proposed density is. We have tried really hard to not give a specific density, even with the appraisers. When they were going through and trying to assess the value of the property, that was one of the questions that they kept coming back with, the multiple appraisers, the ones that Mr. Beck was using when we were looking at the land exchange, and then also our appraisal for the northwest corner. And at all times, we've always indicated that we were looking for the property to develop with a similar density to what exists in Red Mountain Ranch, because those neighbors are going to be the most affected with the development of this property. And we saw as the density that exists there as something that would be compatible with on the west side of Recker Road. So, yes, initially, in our first appraisal, we did not provide a density. We let the appraiser identify that. When he came back with that, we did determine that it was a little too high, and that's why the value came back so high. Once we went back and provided some direction, our appraiser ended up using the two to two and a half dwelling units per acre, and that, correct, that does affect the value of the property. When it went to auction, we ended up with two bidders that were willing to go twenty-one million. You know, Mr. Blanford was the highest bidder at twenty-one point one, but Toll Brothers was also willing to go twenty-one million, fifty thousand.
Yeah, but my point is that I invest in a lot of things, right? And the first thing that you do when you go invest in something is you have to assess the value of what it is that you're investing in. So if I'm hearing you correctly, if you leave it up to the discretion of the appraiser to determine the density based on relation to this existing Red Mountain area, the appraiser comes at twenty-five million, but then you set stipulations of two houses per acre, and it drops the appraisal to fifteen million dollars. That's a drastic change on the valuation of the property, which is, you could say that going to auction is an open process, and you're going to get fair market value for whatever's that you're selling. But if the assumption is the density of the project, and that can affect the price of the property by, you know, what...
But Mayor and Council, this is unusual, right? Typically, the city wouldn't be involved on both ends of the deal. I mean, that's, that's a determination between, and a arms, you know, you would have a developer and a third-party land purchaser making that decision about value and what could be available, but ultimately, the developer has to go get the entitlements. And if, we tried to make an assumption that was fair, we think the council gets to ultimately make the final decision about the density. And so if you feel like the density is different than what the value is, then I guess you can make that decision during the process that you're doing the review on the zoning, but there was no way for us to, we didn't want to, we, and I think we shared with council what was in the purchase and sale agreement before we went out. This was known, we talked about being consistent with Red Mountain. So now you get to make the final decision about what the density is, as sitting as the final decision-maker on the zoning.
I mean, so perhaps we could make the decision on what the density is going to be prior to the execution of this sale and table the issue?
So, Mayor and Council, you couldn't. That's the whole point, is that you have to go through the entire process to determine the density. You have to go through the planning and zoning process, and you have to go then and have it at the very end. And so you can't flip that, you can't put the cart in front of the horse. This is why you had two incredibly sophisticated bidders that were there. They've already done this analysis, and they've figured out, you know, they're not just looking at our appraisals, they had to look at a lot more factors and what they know, what the process is, and where it's going to go. And so the point I was trying to make is, the process hasn't, it's just, it's just begun. We haven't even signed this contract. There's a whole year of the entire process. And to try to say what the density is right now, that's preordaining the process, and that's not giving the citizens an opportunity to come and speak and talk about the quality and what they want to see in those neighborhoods. And in fact, we haven't done that. In fact, that's why there's a certain amount of risk for someone to bid on this property. And so we'll see how this goes through the entire process.
So the city owns the land right now. Are you saying that it wasn't possible for the city to rezone their own land and choose the density prior to holding an auction for sale?
So the density is usually, Mayor and Council, is done as part of not just a rezoning, but you also usually have a site plan or something else that goes along with it. We don't develop homes, so unless you're going to try to provide an entire application...
I got it.
You had to wait, and you don't look at just density in a vacuum. You look at it in the context of the quality of the home and the open space and how it's being, how it's being utilized. And I can't remember the term we used that we liked, but I'll call them the park area that's the open space, the like linear parks that we, that's intended to be integrated within this development. So you can't look at it just sort of separately like that.
Thanks, Jim.
So again, I don't think we can preordain the outcome of the zoning process, but Mr. Blanford, I think you have something to say on this, but maybe you could give us some, I think, and I think you've actually addressed this earlier, but what are your thoughts on the density of your proposed project?
Well, I wanted to directly answer Mr. Whitaker's questions regarding the appraised value and how it might affect the sales price. You've got to understand that the documents that were put out prior to the sale from the city staff included, excuse me, a purchase contract, what you'd have to commit to. And within a purchase contract, it talked about density being equal to Red Mountain Ranch. There were about six home builders, national home builders, and myself as a local home builder, that were all kind of nibbling on the property, per se. And it's a small development community, so basically, everybody pretty much knows, particularly when you've got a public auction property. And the engineers talk, the consultants talk, I mean, everybody pretty much knows who's looking at the property. But at the end of the day, too, as Jim Smith pointed out, too, you know, sophisticated developers showed up and bid on the property. And basically, the market spoke by telling you what the value of the property is going to be. You won't ever get anything more transparent than a public live auction. You know, sealed contracts and negotiations behind the scenes and private meetings and things were not transparent. This was totally transparent, so you're getting, you're getting the market actually speaking as to what they're willing to pay. And then in addition to that, with a twelve-month feasibility period, with your deposits being non-refundable during that timeframe, is unusual. So that even gave more comfort for someone like myself or Toll Brothers to bid to that number. So you've got a fair market value, and it's, fair market value is based on the density that's across the street of Red Mountain Ranch, because that's what the terms of the contract stated it was going to be. So none of us paying attention to the appraised value. I mean, I remember recall reading that appraisal for the first time and thinking that maybe the appraiser was still thinking it was two units an acre over the hundred and thirty-two acres. But it didn't matter, because the purchase contract stated what the bid auction terms were going to be about anyway. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Yeah, definitely. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item? All right.